This is the regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Grimes County. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. We're gonna start with our invocation in just a moment, then we'll be followed with the pledges to the U.S. and the Texas flag. I've invited a dear friend of mine, Lynn Huff. He's a preacher over at the Montgomery Church of Christ and his sweet wife Phyllis. They're going to lead us, or Lynn is gonna lead us in prayer, but we're gonna start with a moment of silence in just a moment to remember Commissioner Husfeld. And I'd just like you to, in your personal thoughts, in your personal prayer, remember that Commissioner Husfeld was a veteran who served our country, served it well, leaves behind a loving wife, Dottie, and he's gonna be missed on this court. He really is. He was an, he is an asset to the county, he was an asset to the county, and he will be long remembered and not forgotten. So if you'd rise, we'll start with a moment of silence, and then Lynn, when it's appropriate, if you would, lead us in prayer.
Our gracious Father, we praise you for life. We thank you for the gift that you've given us to be able to be citizens in this great land and part of Grimes County. We ask your presence today. We ask your presence, which is comforting to know that you never leave us. We're a grateful Father for our judge, all our commissioners, and we pray upon them your richest blessings. In particular, at this time, we ask upon the family of Gary Husfeld, his wife, Dottie, children, grandchildren, and loved ones, we ask a very special touch, that you'd comfort, you'd stand by them, and you would give them light in the dark moments. Bless every citizen that's here today. Fill us with wisdom with yourself. Be our guide, be our shepherd, and we thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. The U.S. flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, please? Will we now move to public comments? Are there any public comments to be made?
Good morning, Court. My name is Mary Ann Waters. I'm a Texas assessor collector here in Grimes County. I'm also a board member on Plannersville Town Hall. We're having our annual dinner and raffle this Friday night at St. Mary's Church in Plannersville. We'll have a catfish dinner, and then we have a live auction afterwards. Everyone is invited to attend.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Maggie Bobo, wife of Mayor Bedeis, and I again wanna thank the county for the interlokal that we have with the county, certainly for 911, and for our roads, and for law enforcement. I never fail to make a phone call to any of those offices or individuals and not get results, and support Bedeis. We just want to say thank you again. A little town like Bedeis, we couldn't operate without the county doing that. And also, even though it's not an interlocal, Dave Lilly is just wonderful to help when we have any questions, keep us on track with providing what we need to do for our emergency management plans, so we're just very thankful. Thanks again from Bedeis for the county.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other public announcements? Any other public announcements? Seeing no one rise to the occasion, we'll move to consent agenda items number three, number four, and number five. We've had an opportunity to review the treasurer's claims and bills, review the reports submitted by the county treasurer, and also approve minutes of previous Commissioners Court. Commissioners, any questions or comments, concerns? If there's no discussion, I move to approve the consent agenda items three, four, and five as presented.
Second motion.
There is a motion before us. Commissioner Mallett. The motion is to approve consent agenda items three, four, and five. That is seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving to emergency management subdivision, Mr. Lilly, item number six. Consider and take action to approve the replat of King Oak subdivision, section four, block A, that combines lot 22, 2.64 acres, with lot 23, 1.52 acres into a single lot to be redesigned, re-designated as lot 22-R for a total of 4.17 acres. That's the public hearing we just saw or heard?
Yes, sir. Judges and Commissioners, again, this is a replat, request to replat, and we've done a number of these over the last several years where one lot, or two lots are being combined into one, and a couple of cases where there were three lots that were combined into one. And again, this is a case where the property owner is wanting to go ahead and start building on their property, and they'd like to combine their two lots into one and remove the center line, so, which we approve because we take a dim view of anybody building on plot lines, too. So this gives them more option of where to build on their lot also.
I move to approve the replat of King Oak subdivision, section four, block A, combining lot 22 and lot 23 as presented.
That's seconded.
There is a motion before us on agenda item number six by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Lilly, again, thank you. Environmental coordinator, agenda item number seven, Marissa Hale. Consider and take action to approve the demolition or auction disposal of the Anderson, Iola, and Keith collection site building. Good morning.
Good morning. So these were the buildings that we are replacing that were budgeted for this past year. The Keith building is an old election building, and it's, I think, a 30 by 15, so it's huge. It's still in really good condition, so I don't see the need to auction, or to demo it. We should auction it. So I need approval for that, as well as, then the Iola and Anderson buildings are rotted out, not salvageable. I mean, floors, making them down and coming into the ground, so, yes. Questions?
On the Anderson and the Iola, if we do decide to demo those, then that is the responsibility of the county to?
Yeah, and I talked to Scotty from Iola with Roden Bridge, and he has said that with, we would start with Iola, it's, 'cause it's right by the barn, that they could demo it and put it in the, and either, he said put it in the burn pile, but we could also haul it off to the landfill, which is right there.
Scotty's a Roden Bridge employee?
Forming for the.
Form, okay.
So then we could coordinate and do sort of the same thing for Anderson.
And then the one in Keith, you would put on auction?
Yes, and make sure that they move it, whoever buys it, so we're not left with.
What auction are you looking at?
I don't know. I was kinda gonna go with whatever the county uses as far as.
And the building right outside of Anderson?
Yes, the.
That one is to be destroyed?
Yes, that one is rotted out. It gets critters sometimes, so, there's.
So we're demolishing Iola, Anderson, and Richards?
No, we don't have one of Richards.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm lost. Bedeis is what I'm trying to.
Bedeis, we did not budget for this year, so that will be one to look at for next year.
Where do you think the animals are gonna go when we take their home away? That might, that might be a citizen concern, Marissa.
There are woods.
Inquiring minds wanna know.
What is the size of that Keith building?
I think it's a 30 by 15. It's like, it's a two-bedroom with about one bathroom. I mean, it's a two-room.
It's a one-bedroom, isn't it?
No, it's got two. It's got one on each side, and then there's a little bathroom right when you walk in the door.
Where the books are.
We cleaned up the books. They're on the shelf now. Progress.
Well, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the demolition or auction disposal of the Anderson, Iola, and Keith collection site buildings.
I second the motion. There's a motion before us on agenda item number seven. Motion is by Commissioner Barbara Walker, is the first, seconded by Commissioner David Dobianski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hale.
Thank you.
Number eight on the agenda, Roden Bridge engineer, Harry Walker. Consider and take action to award the C, County Road 132 Bridge construction contract and authorize the county judge's signatory.
Good morning, everyone. Last week, we opened bids for the replacement of the County Road 132 Bridge up north of Bedeis. Unfortunately, we only received one bid, and it was considerably higher than my estimate. I have talked to all the plan holders. We had seven plan holders. Only one of them chose to bid. I was able to talk to five of the seven and find out why they chose not to bid. And there are several issues that they said, if, you know, if you could address this, then we would've turned in a bid. So at this point, given the price that we got was out, significantly out of my estimate, I'm gonna recommend that we reject this bid, and then I will repackage and go out to rebid it here in the near future.
When you repackage, do you have to modify the original?
That's my intention. There's, there's not a lot of point in just taking the same project back out to bids with the same issues in it. One of the things that a couple of the bidders brought up was our requirement for a bid bond. That's per county policy. We've discussed this in the past, but I am gonna specifically ask y'all to waive the requirement for a bid bond on this package, because two of the five bidders told me that was an issue for them, and I've never felt strongly about bid bonds being particularly beneficial to the county. A couple of the bidders asked that we take the roadwork associated with the bridge project out of the package. They just wanna come in and build a bridge. I said, well, we could certainly do that. We kinda know how to build roads. And they, some of these smaller contractors can be lower price. They don't have the equipment to do roadwork. They have to go rent equipment and things, so it's not efficient for them. And then there's some design issues with the bridge itself that I'm gonna address with Paul Mallett. Try and make it a little, it's a little bit overdesigned. I think we can reduce the, the size of the beams somewhat, still meet the state criteria, and bring the cost down, too, so. But that's my intention. If all are amenable, I would repackage it in probably in mid-March. Advertise it again, go back out for bids.
Judge, as far as options today, it's set to award. You can either award or reject, and so what I'm hearing, the recommendation is to reject.
Yes.
Okay. I guess just from my ignorance, what is the value of the bid bond to the county? And the cost of the bid?
The purpose of the bid bond is in a circumstance where you have a low bidder who, for whatever reason, chooses not to sign the contract, then we can collect his bid bond. It's typically 5% of the bid amount, so there's some dollar value there. Particularly in this case, there isn't even a second bid. You're not gonna offset the cost of that, you know, the differential between those bids by capturing a bid bond. You know, you can, you can take a little bit of money from the bonding company, but it's, it's never served a significant purpose in my mind. Typically, if you have a low bidder who chooses not to sign the contract after it's awarded to him, it's because he's found a fundamental flaw in his bid, and he's not gonna be able to perform successfully on that. Quite frankly, I don't wanna punish him if he's made a mistake, and we'll go on, work with the second bidder, or in this case, we'll have to just rebid the project, so.
And Judge, we talked with Commissioner Husfeld several times about modifications to the county's policy. There's two statutes, at least two statutes that are in play. You're dealing with a bid bond, performance bond, payment bond, three different types of bonds, but we consider in each, should at least be considering in each contract. There are statutory requirements oftentimes when you're dealing with public work, and sometimes we have to make a determination of what we deem to be a public work. For instance, the material on a road, is that a public work? Probably not. But I've got a cheat sheet that I've drafted that I'll certainly get in your hands, but has, it incorporates the various statutes, and it, it sets out when each is required and when it's not. And so if it's just a policy decision at the discretion of court, certainly you, as a court, can decide to do something differently than a previous court. So I think that's what Mr. Walker's talking about.
Thank you.
In this case, it's only the bid bond that I'm asking to waive. The payment or performance bonds are clearly required by state law. You can't argue that building a bridge isn't public work, where some of the things we do, maybe you could, but the bid bond is strictly a county policy.
Sure.
We will also, here in March, I'm gonna bring forward recommendations on the other bonding issues, you know, going forward for annual contracts. So we'll have an opportunity to have a thorough discussion of all of that in the near future.
And again, this, was this in Commissioner Husfeld's precinct?
This is precinct one.
Precinct one, so Commissioner Mallett, okay. All right. Thank you, sir. I move to reject the bid for, on County Road 131, bridge construction.
132.
I mean, 132. I second the motion. There's a motion before us to reject the bid for the bridge construction on County Road 132. It is made by Commissioner Mallett, Commissioner Dobianski. Give it a second. All in favor of rejecting the bid, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Mr. Walker, I guess you get to start over.
Thank you. We don't have to go quite back to square one.
Do you wanna, go, go ahead if you will with your Roden Bridge report, please, sir.
On the Roden Bridge report, we're continuing to do what we can with the weather conditions. Actually, I went and looked at the, the weather calendar for February. We, we only had four days in the month when we didn't have measurable rain, so it's been pretty tough slogging here lately. We have continued to do what we can. We did have our tree contractor come in the past two weeks and taken down a number of dead trees in both ends of the county. That's something that, when there are significant numbers of trees to come down, it's more efficient to have them come in and do it than to do it with our crews. The, the larger trees, they're gonna be, you know, falling in the road. We like to have a professional do it. We also, we had an instance, we had to do redecking on the bridge on County Road 157 that was damaged, appears by some of the oil field traffic. Like, there was no, were no witnesses to document it for certain, but we did have to replace that bridge deck that looked like a large, heavy truck had gotten off the runners onto the side and broke the boards along the side of the bridge down, so. Probably would do for a new deck, anyway, but some of the things we're trying to do now.
Can I ask you a question? If and when something like that happens, and we know who the person is that causes the damage, is that something that we try to get their insurance to pay for, or is that an obligation of the county?
Yes, sir. If we have documentation, we have witnesses, or ideally, if we actually get a photo of the truck, we'll go after them, try and collect either directly or from their insurance. A lot of times, we have instances like this where something happens and nobody saw it happen, and the truck driver didn't volunteer, you know, he caused a problem. We had a, another instance out in the Chatter Lake subdivision yesterday, where we had simply took an 18-wheeler down through there and slid off the side and damaged a brand-new covert. We do have police reports and information on that, 'cause he got stuck and he got pulled out, so we will be pursuing that, so. When we have the information, we go after them. A lot of times, we don't have the information.
And I'm not looking to cause anguish for our citizens, but when we have these commercial folks that come in and do the damage?
Yeah, and, and that's typically what happens. Truck drivers try to do things they maybe shouldn't be, or they get into an area where they're not familiar with the roads, and they're not able to navigate the turns, things like that.
Thank you.
If I may, if I may, for his information, we had, the day after Harvey, we had a truck come down 215, cut ruts in there about eight inches deep, and we've got an $8,000 bill out that we're fixing to hopefully collect from him. On that same road, three years ago, a truck from another company broke a cattle guard on that road, and they paid for that one, too. We, we can collect if we have the documentation. And I got pictures and the truck driver's name of that truck that tore up 215 that day, and pictures of the road.
And of course, we do, where we have entities, we know we're doing projects on these roads, like the drilling companies and Center Point and Cross Texas and things, we have agreements in place, allows to collect from them for damages, and that includes just routine wear and tear on the roads, and things like this where they crush a covert or something like that, so that's working pretty well for us.
Good. Thank you.
Any questions?
Is that any good?
Hope for some sunshine and dry weather.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Does March reject any of that? Check your farmer's home net? Okay, all right. We'll move on to agenda item number nine. County judge will discuss Commissioner precinct four vacant position, Gary Husfeld's replacement. Just so the court will know and the citizens know, the replacement process, it is upon me to make the decision as to who will be the person that will fulfill Commissioner Husfeld's term, current term, that will expire 12/31/2018. Commissioner Husfeld's name is on the ballot. He does not have an opponent on the ballot, either on the Republican ticket, nor does he have an opponent on the Democratic ticket. So according to Texas Election Code, what will occur is the party chairman of the Republican Party, along with the precinct chairs within Commissioner Husfeld's precinct, the four of those people, it's three precinct commissioners, excuse me, precinct commish, precinct chairs, and the Republican Party chairman, those four people will select a name to go on the November ballot to replace Commissioner Husfeld's name on the ballot. In an instance of someone who is on the ballot and dies, that's the process. If somebody were to have withdrawn, then the Democrats would be able to put a name on the ballot in November, and then you'd have a Republican and Democrat on the ticket. In this instance, we will only have a Republican in the November general election. That name will be furnished by Susan Patrick, Republican Party Chair, and the three precinct chairs out of Commissioner Husfeld's precinct.
Judge, just to clarify, independent could.
You mean that wasn't clear?
An independent could file. You said there will only be.
Oh, okay.
There's not certainty about that until the window closes for someone to run as an independent.
Okay, and I was not aware of that.
Yeah, I, they would have that regardless. If, if, if you had two people, one in the Republican Party, one in the Democratic Party, and we were now where we are, you'd still have the opportu, obviously, as an independent, you don't have a primary.
Right.
They don't have the election that's coming up next week, so their deadline, and, and don't quote me on this, but I think it's somewhere between June and August that they have a deadline, and so my understanding is that you would still have, and a person who wanted to run as an independent will still have that opportunity, and the deadline will be the same as, as it has been.
Chairman Patrick, do you recall the dates I gave you for the signup period?
And, and I spoke with Secretary of State yesterday, and it's like, they recommend, I think it starts June.
I wanna say 26th.
First, and it's over August about the 20th.
Okay, so it's about a 60-day period or so? All right. But anyway, that's going to be the process. Thank you for that input.
I just didn't want.
John C.
Sure, I didn't want it to be left, that that's the only option, and then.
Yep.
People on social media or whatever say that the judge has foreclosed that option of running as an independent. Judge doesn't have that authority.
Not my call, but thank you on that.
Your best.
Commissioners, any questions on that?
On your process of appointing to someone to replace Commissioner Husfeld, would you be taking names, or would you take recommendations from court, or what?
All of the above. If, if, one, if, and I've had a couple of citizens call, and what I've told those citizens to go see Lucy Pope, one, get an application, complete that application. If you have a resume, please have one, attach it to that, and then through Ms. Pope, we will set up interviews, and we will then make a decision who will fill. I don't have a deadline yet. I wanted to make today's announcement in court and make it a part of record, so people would know, and people that do use public media would maybe go, hey, if you're thinking about running for Commissioner Husfeld's position, you need to talk to Lucy Pope or to HR. So, and on the flip side, if I get a recommendation and then somebody calls me, I'm telling them to follow that process, complete an application, build a resume, attach it to the application, turn it in to Ms. Pope. She's gonna be the record keeper, and she'll assist, along with Cherie Wagner, for setting up interview dates. My desire would be to have a decision made by the last regular meeting of March. That's my desire. If I can make it sooner than that, I will, but I would like to be able to do it by the, the last meeting in March, on the fourth meeting. Any questions? Okay. Ms. Pope, thank you for getting our arrangement in remembrance of Commissioner Husfeld. Thank you very much. Agenda item number 10, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize a county judge's signatory. My thought is if someone could light a match, we might need to have a burn ban, but I don't see any reason to change it at this time. Any discussion? Then no action at this time. Item number 11, receive any updates on the strategic plan, including numbers six, seven, eight, and nine, and see attachment number 11.
Number six is animal shelter.
Animal shelter. We, you wanna go ahead and give us what you have on that?
We have, we have a meeting tentatively set up for Tuesday of next week to hopefully finalize our application for the 501(c)(3).
Does it look good?
Yes, to move that forward. Hopefully, we can get that finalized next Tuesday and move forward with that.
Okay. Anything else?
Judge, on that item, and certainly, it's worthy of updates on the progress, but assuming that it's a non-county entity, there's not much for the county to accomplish when that 501(c)(3) gets formed and begins to run itself. So at some point, you may take it off as an item, or you could leave it on and say, hey, we're gonna continue to get updates about how things are going with that shelter, but the plan is not for the county to own the shelter, and so it's not necessarily a county issue, although it is of county concern.
Correct, and thank you for that input. The reason I'd like to leave it on the schedule, at least for the, or the agenda for the time being, as we talk about strategic items, is there's so much citizen concern about where we at, what's going on, I would like to have semi-regular updates on the progress of that. But, but thank you again. But thank you again for your input on that. Item number seven, digitize county records. Judge Lamont had that responsibility. I've assumed that responsibility of watching how we're going. We are making progress. I guess everybody would like the progress to be faster, but it's just, it's just a time-consuming effort, the amount of records the county has and to get them digitized. But we haven't stopped. We're continuing that process. Any questions or anybody wanna take that over? If you don't ask, you don't get. I'll continue to monitor that. Item number eight on our strategic plan, promotion of countywide events. Commissioner Walker?
This was one of our goals to, to make our citizens more aware in one spot of what's happening within the community, all the communities, and to heighten the attendance of it and to increase citizen participation. We now have our new county website and thank you, Cherie and Vanessa Brzezinski, for working that out. We can go there now, one single location, and it has color-coded, community, county, whatever you're looking for. You can click on calendar and each one is highlighted by the color code and it tells you, then you can then click on the item and it opens up either agenda or what's going on with that particular item. So it is there. We not only have that, we have lots of quick links that says if you're new to the county and what you may be looking for and how to find it. So I really love our new website and we appreciate the county for moving forward with a better website than what we had genetically before. You couldn't do much with it. But now a person can go on, if I make no mistake, Cherie, they can upload to the calendar, or it's still done through the chamber.
It's through me or the chamber?
Through you or the chamber, okay. You can, if you're an organization and you want something uploaded to the calendar, you can either get with Cherie or Johnny Magnolia's staff at the chamber, so it's a good deal.
Okay, thank you.
Is that one we would say we check it off on the short list?
I'm all about crossing things off on a list. Sounds like we could cross it off, but that's a few.
Are you comfortable with us taking it off the list?
Sure.
Okay. Just a question. Has anybody in the audience gone to the website and kinda perused and navigated through? Find it easier?
Yeah.
Excellent. We're still open for ideas and improvements as we move along, but thank you. All right, we're going to, Ms. Wagner, if you'll make a, what, redact it off the list? Let's just put completed.
I don't think you wanna change numbers, so just put, yeah, just put a line through it, right?
Over the term, say completed at present or something along that line. Thank you, ma'am. All right, go back to Commissioner Dobianski on number nine, enforcement of weights and loads on county roads. I know we've had conversation and you've talked about it, but again?
We originally set this as a short-term goal, but after we got into it, found out that we thought that we could take an officer from the Sheriff's Department and designate that officer, but there has to be training and it has to be an additional officer. So we're gonna try to do that this coming year as we do the budget. We desperately need that as we have more and more people tearing our roads up. We've got to have somebody out there to document that and not only our county roads, but our state roads also. I've gone over this before. Whenever we have, they have officers on two ninety, those people are coming down Highway one oh five or Highway thirty and trying to avoid those officers tearing our roads up and creating more traffic over here. And additionally, Waller County, who we've talked to, when they started, they had one officer, it paid for itself within a year and they added another one and now they're working on cleaning trash up on the roads since they have two officers. So that's something that we can look at too, once we get the officer in here and, you know, we can utilize them for more than, more than one thing. But we'll have to add an additional officer. And because of the budget constraints in the last year, we have not been able to put that in place, but hopefully this year we can.
Do we have any idea how much the weights will cost?
The scales?
Mm-hmm, the scales.
I think they're about twenty thousand dollars for the four of them.
So I was just about to ask that question. Does it weigh out bringing in?
No pun intended.
Yes, no pun intended. Does it weigh out that we bring in an officer? Will he pay for himself? That's what I'm saying. With all of this, it's paid for itself.
That's what Waller County said, that within the second year, it paid for the position. It won initially, the first.
I know we're doing so much with our current budget and to, that's the reason why I asked that question, that we, like she asked, we talked about the scales before and how expensive they were. So I just wondered through what road and bridge is doing and what we're getting from citizens and the reporting, what the totals may be that we collect now, in addition to what you're saying, that will bring in additional revenue because somebody's watching that.
Would those be portable scales? So that when you go from one place to another?
The officer carries them in his vehicle.
And we're such a large county. He looks like he's gonna be running from here to there unless it's just a certain area that we're particularly concerned about.
But once, once you get the officer in place, they're not gonna be coming through here to try to dodge him because they know if they come through here, they'll get caught. That's, that's the deterrent for it.
And I don't think we wanna turn Grimes into a Gacha county between, you know, road damage and overweight, but in the same respect, if we citizens are paying the taxes for all the repair, they tear it up, then they ought to be obligated.
Well, I was just looking, a lot of these things talk about what strategies the citizens favorite and rules and regulations. I don't, one of them, I just wondered if, you know, we're looking at rules, but we're looking at a little bit more than that, so.
Well, and if I could comment, Mr. Walker's office has developed a permit that we've used with different entities. But we faced this before and there's an AG opinion, or maybe it's multiple AG opinions that are pretty clear that when a vehicle is overweight, which is eighty thousand plus ten percent tolerance, eighty-eight thousand or more, those folks obtain a permit from the state. They post a bond and I believe it's fifteen thousand or so that they post and they list all of the counties that they may be operating in. If potentially there's some damage caused in your county, the county then has to call, do that bond and basically report to the state what the issue is and can potentially get fifteen thousand. The entities are required to put out another fifteen thousand. If your damage exceeds the fifteen thousand, you may be in this loop of collecting that money. But it, the code specifically prohibits the county from requiring a permit of somebody that's over eighty-eight thousand. I mentioned all of that to say, we're all just guessing how much it weighs if we're looking at it, you know? Without somebody to weigh it, we don't know. And so somebody can say, I'm overweight and I, I'm sorry, my vehicle is overweight and I have a permit and it's a state permit and I'm fine. If it's, if they're not, we have the ability to permit them and charge a fee. And so it's crucial to that determination to be able to weigh vehicles.
Sure.
And so we've just done, we're essentially flying blind at this point. And we've, we've had various entities that have done business and had an ongoing relationship with the county, primarily oil field work that have come to the county and said, we wanna do the right thing and sign an agreement that says we damaged the roads, then we'll have some security here that we'll pay for. But that's not usually the circumstance. I mean, we're not finding entities that are coming in and saying, I'll be through your county one time or, you know, one time a day or whatever it is, let me sign an agreement. So knowing what vehicles weigh by having the scales and certainly having somebody with the expertise to determine whether or not the permit is valid, whether it's to the state, whether they're required to have a county permit, they may very well come to you as a court and say, hey, I think it's appropriate that you put in place a permit for all things that are below the eighty-eight thousand number. So having somebody that would be able to provide that information to you may allow you to find a way to generate dollars to help pay for that position.
Very good. Thank you. Question, did you get your questions answered?
That is.
Good. Anything else? All right, that will conclude our updates on the strategic plan at this point.
Now, we worked on one through nine originally, so are we going further?
I would like to.
Okay. I just wanna know how to be sure.
Well, the idea was kind of start going down the list to get updates to see where we're at and certainly where Commissioner Husfeld's name is. Maybe somebody else needs to pick that up for the time being, or possibly we can wait. The other thing is we have, once we get down to about twenty, there to be announced at a later date and we're kinda at that later date on some of them. I don't wanna overload anybody's plate, but I have some of these things, and some of these things might already have been taken care of.
Some of them are pretty much.
So we can.
Are getting there.
Yeah. So it just, in my opinion, it behooves us to review and update the strategic plans since it's the citizens' plan.
I guess what I was getting at, we were assigned different tasks and I don't know how far down we went on the list.
Down to about twenty.
To twenty, okay.
Yeah, we went down to about twenty. Okay. All right, if there's no other discussion on the strategic plan, we'll go to agenda item number twelve.
Move to adjourn. A second.
There's a motion, Commissioner Malick to adjourn. There was a second by Commissioner Dobianski. All in favor, say aye. Four oh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.